Hello and welcome to the Northeast Ohio Media Group Candidate Debates. I'm Bruce Geiselman, and today we're going to be hosting a debate for Olmsted Falls City Council, which is up for election November 3rd. The candidates will introduce themselves in just a minute, but first, here are the rules. Each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and explain why they're running. Then we'll ask candidates, giving each candidate 90 seconds to answer, ask some questions, giving them 90 seconds to answer, and one minute for a follow-up. At the end, we'll allow 10 minutes for the candidates to ask each other questions with 60 seconds permitted for the answers. So let's get started. The candidates with us today are at-large candidates Robert Blumquist, who is the former mayor of Olmsted Falls. Next to him, we have Jay Lynn, who is an incumbent councilman; then Linda Garrity, who is also an incumbent, and council president; and we have, at the very end, fourth ward candidate Kyle Miller. Also, Sam Police is running for fourth ward. He could not be with us here today. And James Haviland also is not with us here today. So let's start with Mr. Blumquist. Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us why you're running?
I'm Bob Blumquist. I'm the former mayor of the city of Olmsted Falls. I also had the privilege in public service to serve on city council for six years prior to becoming mayor. Been invested in the community since the mid-'80s. Raised my family there, all children graduates. I lived in Olmsted Falls prior to that as I was growing up, and it's a great place to raise children. Try to keep it directed to keep it that way. And the reason I'm running this time is because I'm concerned about the status of the city financially. I see a lot of expenditures that are unnecessary and confusing, and I see most of the publications coming out in newsletters saying that everything's fine when the financial reports that come before these councils indicate otherwise.
Okay. Mr. Lynn, would you like to tell us why you're running?
Yes, my name's Jay Lynn. I've been a 38-year resident of Olmsted Falls. Raised three children there, all graduated from Olmsted Falls High School. Went on to local colleges here in the Cleveland area, Cleveland State namely, and Case Western. I'm currently council-at-large in the second year of a two-year term. I'm running again because I think we've made significant strides in bringing the city of Olmsted Falls into the 21st century, which was long overdue. I believe that our job's not done yet, and I think we need the continuity that we've had somewhat of a successful 19, 20 months right now. I'd like to see it continue. We just published our first annual financial report to the residents and sent it out, and it's very, very thorough. I think it was long in coming. We also now are up to speed with our audits, and for the first time in years, we've actually had an audit that passed.
Okay, Mrs. Garrity.
My name is Linda Garrity, and I hold a master's degree in nursing. I'm a nurse educator. I also have a graduate-level degree in quality assurance from California State University. I'm a mother to Mike, a 17-year-old. I'm married to Rory Hurley since 1980, and I've lived in Olmsted Falls since 1997. And growing up, my parents were always both very, very involved in local grassroots politics, and so I've sort of taken after them. I'm involved in the community. I'm a volunteer. I've been helping my son with horse rescue. I belong to St. Mary's Church, and as I said, I'm interested in the community since 1997. And I'm really loving city council, and by the way, I'm not council president, but I am council-at-large.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
But thank you. I was voted council-at-large. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Miller?
Great. Well, thank you very much. I'm happy to be here. I appreciate the Northeast Ohio Media Group holding this debate. It's a great way for me to be able to talk directly to the citizens here. As opposed to the other people up at this table, I'm a relative newcomer to Olmsted Falls. My wife and I moved into the area about three years ago. Coming into the area, I knew that I wanted to be involved at the local level of government in some way. I had thought about it a few years ago during the last election cycle and found out that it just wasn't quite ready to be able to take on this responsibility. I recently completed the Cleveland Bridge Builders course through the Cleveland Leadership Center, I believe it is, and during the first meeting that we had, it was really hammered into us that leaders show up, and that's really what I've taken to heart, and that's really why I submitted my name for this election. I believe that in Olmsted Falls, all of the members are looking for someone that's educated, has experience, and a vision to move forward, and I look forward to this debate.
Okay, thank you. Well, first question then. Candidates, how does your work and/or life experience make you a good candidate for city council? And do you have a particular area of expertise, perhaps training in finances, government, or something else that would make you an effective leader? Mr. Blumquist?
Well, I've had the obvious experience of being able to serve 14 years as mayor, which has caused me to look into every avenue of operation of cities. Was able to use that time, you know, to make improvements and bring us, the city's infrastructure up to date and progressively forward to eliminate the safety hazards of the railroad trains, the disturbances of noise from the trains going through the community, and overall, kept an eye on improving the quality of life. I am well-versed with the city's finances. It all comes down to the money. Olmsted Falls is primarily residential community. The homeowner pays the freight. And again, it's essential that the public monies are used appropriately and directly for services to be returned to the residents for their hard-earned tax dollars. I mentioned I was council before. I also understand the duties and responsibilities of that office. And as I began to look into things, I see that the majority of city council has just gone along, supporting the mayor's programs, which are appropriate, but I don't see a lot of questioning or a lot of interrogatories going into some of the detailed expenses. This year, there are a half million dollars in the hole out of the general fund for the first seven months of this year. The year prior to that, there were $300,000 in the hole. I left this city in good financial straits, over $2 million in that general fund. They're down to $1,300,003.
Okay.
You need to get into the details why.
Okay. Mr. Lynn?
Yes. I beg to differ on some of those numbers that Mr. Blumquist had just reviewed. Our finance director, Mr. Presley, had just gone over those numbers with us, and at this particular time, we're still collecting income taxes and property tax money, which will continue for, I believe, another five months out of this year. So the numbers you looked at today don't reflect an entire year's figures. Our financial report, like I said, the first one that's ever come out, just came out, and the numbers are there. If people look at them, they can see what the numbers are. If they'd like to talk to the finance director to get verification on all the numbers, they're welcome to do that. I'm comfortable with the numbers. A lot of times, we don't need to have questions at council because we do our homework ahead of time. If we look at the numbers before we go, we look at our financial report, we get our packages on Friday afternoon, that gives you Saturday, Sunday, and Monday to look at them before a council meeting. There's not a lot of time, discussion is necessary, once you, if you've done your homework. I find that the, some of the obstructiveness that is now rooted in council comes because people come to meetings unprepared. When they come to a meeting unprepared, they start to question everything because they haven't reviewed the information that they've been given.
Okay. Mrs. Garrity?
First of all, I want, I did want to mention my quality background, and I think that's important to mention, and so far, we've been talking about the financial aspects of the city. And I also feel like I've done quite a bit of homework, and to be quite honest, I'm really aghast at the comments that Bob Blumquist would make, and if I could highlight a couple of those quickly. When he tells us he left our city in good condition, I was the one that fought to get the collection for $250,000 of lost trash bills. Mr. Blumquist was ready to just slide that under the table, not advertise it to the public so that people like myself and maybe you, Mr. Miller, were paying for people that weren't paying their bills. He was quite satisfied with that. This past year, we found out that there was half a million dollars sitting in an escrow account from the railroad that Mr. Blumquist just very conveniently forgot to mention. Well, half a million dollars is quite a bit of money for the budget of Olmsted Falls. We're a small city. There was no information traded off from the old administration to the new administration January 1st, 2014. He was also very famous for hiring friends and family members. I personally outlined an approach for our senior recreation that would cut the costs of the program in half and double the activities. He blocked every step of the way. So I don't want to hear about financial smartness from him.
Bruce, could you repeat the question real quick? I feel like we've gone down a little bit of a different road.
Sure, yeah. The question was about your work and life experience and why it makes you a good candidate for city council, and if you have any particular areas of expertise, like finance.
Wonderful. Great. Well, I'm trained as an attorney, and I've been an attorney for five years now, and in my professional job, I work in government affairs. So in doing that, I know how to work through the political sphere and to be able to promote economic development. In my previous role before I came to Cleveland, I worked for the United States Senate on the Environment and Public Works Committee Office in a council capacity. Since I've come back, I've worked for the Sisters of Charity Health System right here in downtown Cleveland, again, in government affairs and public policy role. The aspect that I've really focused on outside of healthcare, of course, is economic development, and I think that's really key for a city the size of Olmsted Falls to really build up some of the assets that we do have, as well as having a vision, a passion, and a plan to be able to move forward on that vision, to be able to bring more money into the city. So maybe less of the burden does fall on the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you. And then each of the candidates has an opportunity, if you wish, for 60 seconds to respond. Did you want to respond, Mr. Blumquist, to anything that your opponents have said?
I believe the numbers Miss Garrity cited are incorrect, and I do take exception to that. I have my own sheets that council reviews each time, every month before they have a meeting, they get a statement of cash position, and each month, they both accept that into the auditor's record, and these documents come before them regularly, and again, they don't seem to be alarmed by this. I just want to get in and sit there and take a look at what we're spending the money on, if it's appropriate, and go ahead and, you know, as council, take the council responsibilities of going through those expenditures and taking those out, having given notice to the administration that, you know, we're not going to tolerate these type of expenses anymore.
Anyone else care to?
Sure. Mayor Blumquist, in his last two years in office, tried one, two, three, four, five times to increase taxes. In the amount of 30% on his first try, okay, in the amount of 50% on the second try, in the amount of 65%, or I'm sorry, 1 mil with an increase of .65, which, 1 mil to 1.65 is 65%. And the last time, a general, just renewal of an existing. The last two failed. One, the council that had agreed on, which was just a renewal, which would have been fiscally responsible to keep the city solvent at that time. The council had voted seven As, actually, the entire council, and the mayor vetoed that one mil renewal. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Garrity?
And by the way, I would be happy to show anyone out there any of the figures from documents on the items that I had just mentioned. And again, I'm just aghast that Mr. Blumquist would try to throw numbers around and try to massage the facts, but again, $250,000 from uncollected trash fees, that he made no attempt to ever come up with any type of a collection process. Again, half a million coming in from the railroad that just somebody forgot to mention that that money was out there, and that's because, you know, we were, I was always asking for spreadsheets during the underpass project so that we could follow the numbers, but during Mr. Blumquist's administration, technology was a real weak point. We had a finance director that couldn't manage spreadsheets. She had difficulty pulling up any type of electronic records during council meetings. She could never seem to locate documents.
Okay.
Again, I have all my records.
All right. Mr. Miller, would you care to add anything?
Sure. I'm in a little bit of an awkward position. I'm not debating against anybody, but if I can just add on to what I had said earlier, I really believe, and this is what I hope to do if I am elected into this council position, is to be able to really facilitate collaboration. I think that the entire council is able to work together a lot more effectively than it's able to work separately as seven different council entities that aren't sharing information. So I know that I would just be one member on a seven-person council, but that's something that I would really try to work together on.
And I guess I'm going to deviate a little bit from the script here because it's become pretty obvious, just with the first couple of questions here, that there is a division within council and within the city. I think, is it fair to characterize it as a division between supporters of Mr. Blumquist and supporters of current Mayor Donigan? Is there any way that the city can help kind of heal that rift and work together? And I guess we're going to start alternating here, so Mr. Lynn, if you want to go first.
Sure, there's a way. I'll put it a little bit bluntly. Some of the umbilical cords haven't been severed from the previous administration, and it creates an air of obstructiveness, which isn't conducive to good business. It's not conducive to good government or good business. If you have people that want to hang on to the old ways of the community and don't want to move the community into the 21st century, be fiscally responsible. For instance, Mayor Blumquist, as I stated before, that tried five times to pass tax levies, wasn't successful in increases, vetoed the renewal, but on one of the final council meetings of 2013, as he was a lame duck mayor, passed, I believe, 15 pieces of legislation within council that were all pay raises. It was like Christmas Day, two days early. I believe it was on, let me see. I have to find it here. I'm sorry for the delay. It was December 23rd of 2013, and there was 15 pay raises passed. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Well, do you want to just come back? You'll get 60 seconds.
I believe it was the last week of December, but you can check the date.
Here it is. Adopted 12/23/2013. I brought one, this particular one is building and zoning officials compensation, $80,808. It was adopted on 12/23/2013. I'm sorry.
Okay. I think we need to move on. Mrs. Garrity?
All right. When you had talked about, you know, how does healing occur, I like to think of it not as who was in charge before or who was in charge now, but where we're headed. And some of the goals that your false team had was towards being financially prudent, open communication, increase technology, increasing social media so that we could reach out to people. We want people to get involved in their local government, whether they're young or they're old. And for example, when those retroactive pay raises were passed at the last meeting of 2013, you can check the record, I begged not only at that time Mayor Blumquist, but other council members that voted along with him without ever questioning anything. I said, please wait until the new administration and the new council is seated January 2014. We didn't have a budget, and to go back and give retroactive pay raises for two years was just unconscionable. But yet now, I have to sit here and listen to him make statements about being financially prudent, and I just want to make sure that the public is aware of what the real facts are. We have the minutes here that show all of the lame duck legislation, those pay raises from December 2013. I'd be happy to show them to anyone.
Okay. Mr. Miller, you'd be kind of the outsider coming in here.
I'm happy to yield and then come back to me if that'll make this conversation a little bit easier.
Okay. Well, I guess if you yield, you get 60 seconds later if you want, but...
Yeah, yeah, that would be great.
Okay. Mr. Blumquist?
Just to facilitate the conversation.
A lot of this is beginning to sound like inside-baseball stuff, and don't want us to go over the head of other people that are trying to be patient, trying to listen to us, articulate our positions, but quite simply, you know, we have papers around all day, but I, you know, have the essential numbers here. And since when I left office, I left it in a fiscally healthy position, over $2 million in that general fund. Again, it's down to $1,300,003 as of July 31st. There's no way they're going to make that deficit up at the end of the year. That concerns me. If we go forward like that, it's going to continue to stress our services. It's going to make it so that it's untenable to live in the city, and people will be facing someone in the future asking them for real and significant tax increases. We have a healthy reserve fund, or we had one, and I want to make sure that if I'm in there, that that's preserved. This isn't about fighting the last war. This is about going forward and protecting the interests of our taxpayers and keeping this community a good, safe place to live.
And unfortunately, I don't have the document with me, but Mr. Presley, the finance director, Steve Presley, had put out a report that showed things in the city, it appeared to be rather on a positive footing, but you're saying you questioned those numbers, or...
No, with Mr. Presley's report that they circulated and mailed to everyone, said, oh, great, revenues are upward, expenses are down. But what he did, he accounted for everything, all funds together. So you have numerous different funds. There's over 30 funds in the city, okay, and a lot of those are specific for certain activities and purposes. Well, revenues come into all those funds, and if you don't make expenditures out of there, you're going to have revenues up and expenses down. When you're looking at the general fund, which supports almost every activity, since no individual fund's sufficient in and of itself, except for the bond retirements and the silver funds, you see where the hemorrhaging is, okay? And that's what I wanted to address here. And again, it's not about, you can build consensus if you share the data, okay, and if everyone understands the data, and you can have a reasonable discussion and move forward. I may have introduced ordinances, but again, I didn't vote on those ordinances. Council did.
I know you had yielded your time. Did anyone else want to have?
I do.
Okay, all right.
It's interesting, at the end of June, which is up-to-date on calendar year, is 50% of the year, we had actually used 49% of our budget. So we are right on budget. We're right where we should be at the end of June. I don't have the numbers for July yet. Obviously, we've been on recess now for about a month. We did have a couple special meetings. It's very important that I read you these pieces of legislation that were passed midnight of 2013. And basically, I'm just going to zip through them. Accounts payable clerk compensation, okay? Fire chief compensation, service supervisor compensation, senior director compensation, senior director compensation, again, and then finance director compensation, finance director compensation, again, council clerk compensation, assistant finance director compensation, building and zoning official compensation, building administrator compensation, assistant building administrator compensation, assistant, I'm sorry, assistant fire chief compensation, assistant fire chief...
Okay, I'm sorry. You're out of your time.
This goes on about 15 more legislations passed in midnight in 2013 without a budget.
Without a budget.
And that was at the end, yeah, at the end of the year.
At the end of the year, without a budget, without knowing what the new council and administration would be faced with.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, we better move on. Mrs. Garrity?
And again, I could keep mentioning things, but I think that really, there's just some jealousy about what's been happening with efficiencies and streamlining of services. I'll use our building department for an example. We hired an additional member into our building department when building was at zero level. Even our building and zoning officials said, we just had no new construction happening in Olmsted Falls. We brought some in at a very high salary rate. So we have this building department where everyone is sitting and just waiting for the phone to ring or waiting for someone to walk into the office, which is highly inefficient. So we've been able to streamline services by outsourcing, and we've saved $1,000 there. So instead of hiring additional...
$100,000.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said $1,000, right?
$100,000, I'm sorry. So instead of having people just very inefficiently sitting and waiting, now we're sharing services, and we've shared some other services also. Thank you.
Maybe we can get into that a little bit later, but, and you're talking about Safe Belt, the city hired Safe Belt.
Yes, Safe Belt, yeah.
Mr. Miller?
Great. I just wanted to hopefully kind of wrap this up a little bit. I actually agree with what a couple other people had said here. Well, Bob had mentioned previously that I think we're all doing this for the citizens of Olmsted Falls. That's ultimately why what government is supposed to be for. Every position in government is really a service position to the residents. When I was going through, talking to people in my neighborhood, people around the ward, the first comment they said was that they don't feel like they're being represented on council. They don't feel like they have a government that's representative of them, and they don't feel like they have a government that's engaged in some of the issues that they're concerned about. And then moving on to what Linda had said, she said, instead of looking at the past, she's more interested in looking towards the future. That's exactly why I decided to throw my hat in the ring, and that's exactly what I hope to do, should I be elected for this position. I'm not interested in the bickering that happened five years ago, 10 years ago, even three years ago. I'm looking at moving ahead and making Olmsted Falls better for all of the residents.
Okay. And I guess we started Mr. Lynn, so Mr. Blumquist, did you have any follow-up?
No, we can move on.
Okay. All right. Well, let's try and get to some of the issues then facing the city right now. I know that there's been talk about trying to attract some new businesses downtown. What ideas do you have for making downtown more attractive to the business community, and what types of businesses would you like to see? And I guess we're starting Mrs. Garrity this time.
All right. I think at one of the meetings, it was earlier in the summer, we had talked about our master plan and what we would like to see at the end of the town where the old library was at, and our Jenkins Center, which the city owns that building. And we had some people come in and present some ideas. And the one idea that I could really connect with, if we look at that area there on Main Street and possibly bring in some restaurants, we have some river views, we're close to the water there, the park system, and we seem to have had really good luck with some new restaurants coming into town. So I'm really hoping that we can capture maybe that Vermillion feel where there's restaurants on the water and just get people to come and walk about. We have the junction with some of those remodeled buildings from the 1800s and antique shops and quaint little shops. And for example, this past weekend, they had Vintage Marketplace, and there was a crowd larger than anyone had anticipated. In fact, we were at a loss for parking. And what was nice, we had put some tables, wrought iron tables and chairs out at Mill River Plaza, and Monday morning, I was out bright and early at Mill River Plaza, and two business owners came up to me and said, oh, my gosh, we had so many people here that now, you know, we're concerned about parking. And so we realized that as we bring people in, we do have to come up with some creative ideas for parking to accommodate.
Okay. Mr. Miller, ideas for attracting new businesses downtown?
I would agree. Restaurants are really the area that I would like to see take a hold, and I think what we have in Olmsted Falls, specifically in Grand Pacific Junction, is a hidden gem. A lot of people within the area don't realize that. We probably have the best French restaurant in the entire Northeast Ohio region. I won't try to pronounce it because I definitely can't, but also, my favorite restaurant is Takiera Junction. I have a one-and-a-half-year-old daughter, and she's always wanting to go to Falls Ice Cream. I think that's really a reason and something that we need to coalesce around as far as economic development, and that'll help bring some new, younger residents within the community as well. For me personally, when my wife and I were looking for houses, as I mentioned earlier, we're Olmsted Falls residents by choice. We moved here specifically because we liked the area. My wife has great fond memories going to Clementine's with her mother. You know, those restaurants are really the key to, I think, what we can do.
Okay. And Mr. Blumquist?
Grand Pacific Junction was back in the early '90s, 1992, 1993. One real estate person, Mr. Clint Williams, made himself available, a grant through the county, to go ahead and purchase some of those central downtown properties and get those rehabilitated. It's developed and it's gotten more of a gravitas over the years. That momentum continues to increase, and I think one of the things that we need to do is, you know, besides focusing on the downtown area, it's, fortunately, it's fairly saturated. There are some vacancies down there. A lot of it's the sole proprietorships, the mom-and-pop operations that are in those shops, and that's really an economic engine of the city. However, we can't overlook the rest of our opportunities. One of the things I had hoped would have continued is, when I was on council in 1992, 93, we got community block grant, and we had done the brick streets out there, and we were able to put public dollars in to enhance the private investment. We were able to set aside and do part of a parking lot there to help with those businesses get off the ground and sustain them. I think we need to do that in our last investment target area, our last ITA, which is south of the underpass on Columbia Road. I would have liked to have got community block grants to do the same thing down there, the streetscape lighting and the brick sidewalks and such, because it's also zone commercial. And most of our keepers in the joint economic development district.
Okay. And Mr. Lynn?
It's funny that gets mentioned because in 16, 17 months, we've secured $1.8 million in grant funds. That's exactly what Mayor Blumquist secured in 11 years, and we've done that in 18 months, $1.8 million in grants. We have hired a city engineering firm who is second to none at securing grant money. We've changed the profile of what was our economic development director under Mayor Blumquist's administration to now our business development manager. She meets weekly with almost 90% of our businesses, along with Mayor Donigan. And Mayor Donigan refers to our businesses as our investors, and we treat them as our investors now. We've tried to soften the process... We've tried to soften the process of making changes to businesses, expanding their businesses. We've opened restaurants recently that have utilized spots that haven't been used in years. Like I say, we're about seventeen months, eighteen months into this administration now. We're moving forward. Once again, if it wasn't for the obstructiveness, we would be moving forward at lightning speed. But we've had some problems with a lot of obstruction, and we're working through it. That's our jobs, that's what we do. We want to keep the community healthy.
You're talking about obstruction on council?
Correct, absolutely. It's just, it's unfortunate. That's the best word I can put on it. It's unfortunate. And you know me, I've tried hard, and I'm gonna continue to try hard.
Okay. And let's see, does anybody want a sixty-second follow-up? I think we got through everybody. Does anybody want a sixty-second follow-up?
I would just respond when Mr. Blomquist mentioned nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three, that was twenty-two years ago. And I think it would be very hard for us to mention anything related to economic development in just the past ten years, because he's citing things that I think are rather old and historic.
Okay. Well, let's...
I'll take a one-minute follow-up, Mr. Geiselman.
Oh, all right.
We recently, as recently as August tenth, were notified by Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, what we did is we took our water lines, which were the city's responsibility. We turned those water lines over to Cleveland Water Department and Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer. We're faced with about anywhere from two and a half to five million dollars of repairs on water lines, some which are a hundred years old. This was a frugal move to do this. We just got notified that on Sprague Road, at the far southeastern end of town, that at no cost to us, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer and Cleveland Water are gonna start replacing lines. And I'm telling you, we have, I think, roughly four miles of lines that are over a hundred years old. All of these would have been assessed to the taxpayers had we not given the control of these water lines to the city of Cleveland. It was a highly debated subject, but here's the first payoff in it, that they're gonna bear the cost of replacing these lines. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I may. Again, to the citation, again, I don't wanna keep fighting the last war or whatever, but again, we had over twenty million dollars in capital improvements done in the city while I was fourteen years as mayor. I can easily just think of one grant off the top of my head where they secured two and a half million dollars for the Phase Three sewer projects and offset those costs to residents replacing home treatment systems. When Mr. Lynn refers to grants, again, they're very proud of dispersing this type of information to the public. You know, one million dollars from the Turnpoint Mitigation Program. That's well and good, but again, that grant was applied for in November, in December two thousand thirteen, when I was mayor. They award it this year, they're free to take the credit. I'm not one that's always about credit, and I haven't mentioned that extensively. But to go ahead and say that, you know, we're doing county road projects worth fifty thousand, or county road improvements of two hundred and fifty thousand, I pay county taxes too that go into that. So these are not grants that they've sought, these are grants that others have gotten and have come their way, and they like to express as their own handiwork.
Okay. Well, we got a little bit off of discussing attracting businesses downtown, but let's try and talk a little bit more about businesses with the Joint Economic Development District. You and Olmsted Township set this up in, I guess it was two thousand and one, but you don't have any businesses there yet. What's the problem, and how are you gonna attract businesses? And I think, are we back to Mr. Blomquist now to start? I think you started last, didn't you?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Joint Economic Development District, when we entered into that agreement in two thousand and one, we knew that would take twenty years or so to really get off the ground, if you look back at the discussions then and the public comments made when that was adopted. It wasn't an instant fix, but it was a key set pace, or a set piece to the future vision of this town of diversifying the tax duplicate in both the falls and the township, so that we can get more of a commercial, more industrial development in there. Again, I mentioned earlier, our tax duplicate is about ninety percent residential, and you need to make that about seventy-four, seventy-six percent residential and redevelop your other lands. That's three hundred acres, give or take, in Olmsted Township. The problem is, a lot of that land has been unimproved. No water line, except on one access on Cook Road, with no availabilities for taps there. But the county now is doing an overpass on Sterns Road. That's coming up, and within that is a project that's coming through Northeast Area Wide Coordinate Agency, which I was a board member at the time. We work with the township trustees to get a fifteen-inch sewer line put up there. We bring the sewer, we bring the water to that area, it'll start to develop. And again, we will begin to see businesses locate there and start to offset the cost of the residential duplicate for the property taxpayer.
All right. And Mr. Lynn.
My opinion differs, obviously. I think that the jet, and the entire concept of the jet is flawed at this point. You have a viable industrial parkway in North Olmsted.
I think it's the largest undeveloped tract in Cuyahoga County.
Well, and rightfully so, because you have right now, with current economic conditions, and right on North Olmsted, you could throw a rock, you or I, Bruce Caesar, one, could throw a rock from this industrial parkway to the freeway ramp, which this jet does not have. It doesn't have anything that resembles a freeway ramp anywhere near it. They're gonna always go to the access point first, the best access point for industrial development or just to do it. That particular industrial park in North Olmsted is about thirty-five percent empty right now. There is no desire to go with the jet right now at this time, and I think that it's gonna be years and years and years till it ever does anything. Secondly, this jet and the acreage within it is owned by eleven individual property owners. I believe it's eleven, is it not, Linda?
I think that's pretty close.
Yeah, eleven individual property owners that have trouble agreeing on what time it's gonna get dark or light out. Until that land is acquired in its entirety, it'll be hard to develop it to any useful means. And the foresight should have been to immediately get these landowners either to agree to this or to purchase that land and then worry about the infrastructure.
You mean, they have the city and township purchase?
Correct. That would have been the correct path, I feel.
Okay.
All right. We had a joint jet meeting earlier in the summer, and the township was present, and our city planner, Mr. Smarigan, was there. And township trustee, Ms. Lippas, talked about how there are still homeowners within the jet that aren't even aware that they're part of the jet. And they may be, there are some very small property owners there, but there's some real issues, because if you have people that aren't even aware that their property is part of that jet district, it's hard to move forward. So there's really starting from scratch. The way that, and I've had some questions about the jet, because there's been absolutely no movement with the jet since I've moved to the falls myself. Mr. Smarigan explained it to me, I think, earlier this summer, so that I can accept the jet and its value. And he said that we are looking at a twenty-year period of time out, you know, so we could be looking at, you know, two thousand and thirty, two thousand and thirty-five, where that jet could really become a viable business district. And so I have to stop and think, because I am a mother and I have a seventeen-year-old. And so, okay, so the jet isn't viable right now, but I think everybody in the community has an inherent interest in bringing things for their children and providing for the future. And the jet is that far out, I believe.
Okay. Mr. Miller.
Now, I wasn't on council when the jet was initially discussed and implemented, so this is something that I don't have nearly the breadth of knowledge that my colleagues up here around the table do. But historically, Olmsted Falls, and that's not this administration, that's not the previous administration, that's just historical, probably both administrations, has been seen as not as conducive to business as some of the other areas around the community. I think that has to change. I think that has to change within the council to be able to start at first. As I said, talking to the residents, they feel like they're not being represented, and I feel like a lot of the businesses feel that they would have better opportunities to go to different cities, different municipalities, to be able to start their business or expand their business, as opposed to trying to get through what's been a dysfunctional, what's been a dysfunctional council.
Okay. Does anyone want to take advantage of a sixty-second follow-up?
Sure.
Okay, were you, were you gonna pass then, Mr. Blomquist?
I'm sorry. No.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Lynn.
I wanted to just share these with you. This is some of the things we were faced with as far as different things when we came into City Hall, and you can actually have these, these are yours to keep.
Okay. Does this have to do with the jet?
It has to do with what we were faced with and why it took us a considerable amount of time to get a run-up going. You know, we had election campaign material at City Hall that was from the former administration. That's a no-no, that just, it shouldn't happen. This is all campaign literature that was at City Hall. This one is...
Okay, we will have a section...
You can review that.
Yeah, we're gonna have a section later where candidates can ask questions of each other, so.
Okay, good.
Shall we move on to the next question then?
Sure.
Okay. Now, one of the most common complaints, I guess, that I hear from residents has to do with trains. Apparently, there's a major problem with trains blocking crossings in Olmsted Falls and for prolonged periods of time. Is the city doing anything about this? Can the city do anything about this? And I guess we're starting...
I think we have, and it was rightfully so. Mayor Blomquist championed the overpass, you know, on Columbia Road, and the, it actually took years and years and years to get done, but the railroads, they're not easy people to work with. And now we've got the one in the township over on Fitch Road. It's alleviated a lot of that problem. It still would be nice to have the five crossings that were, you know, now with the one at Sterns Road, we'll have one at Sterns, we'll have one at Fitch, we have one down on Columbia. Hopefully, we can get one someday over at the eastern end, maybe on Lewis Road. That would alleviate seventy-five percent of the problem. You've got an overpass, an underpass, something that gives you a way around the trains, you know? But these things are, they do work very, very slowly, and it takes time. We find the trains, we find the conductors, we find the engineers, we wrote legislation to deal with that, to try to find these people, but they just, they're too big, they don't care. You know, they just don't. And it's unfortunate, but we have to deal with trains, planes, and automobiles.
So is it that they're broken down, or what's the problem?
No, they, I think they use it as a holding area sometimes until they're told they can't do that, you know?
All right, Mrs. Garrett.
Okay, as far as the trains, I love the sound that the trains make, but I hate being blocked by the trains. But I do have to say a couple things. First, the current mayor, Donigan, she's been meeting with the railroads, and that's never happened before. And so we're trying to work with the railroads. They are a giant, they're the largest property owner in the country. And I think our way around it with the traffic congestion is by these overpasses, underpasses. And I'm in Ward Three, so we are really glad that residents in Ward Three, because this new overpass on Sterns, that's going to be such a huge help for Ward Three. And we're really, we have a couple large developments in there that are really heavily populated. And when I was going door-to-door getting my petitions signed, people are just waiting with bated breath for that to occur. And that's about a year and a half out, so I've been trying to tell people, we have about a year and a half. But Fitch Road is also, I think, the overpass is a blessing to the city, because we just need, I think, to work around the trains. We're not gonna be able to prevent them as they come into the yards in Berea if they're stalled. The only thing we can do is encourage the police to find them, and there's been a lot of resistance with the police department to actually find the trains as they're blocking. So I think we're working around them.
Okay. Mr. Miller.
Obviously, trains blocking traffic is a huge issue, and with the fines set up, I think we need to do a good job, and I think we are moving in that direction in the city to really be enforcing these fines. As Linda said, oftentimes, it's hard to actually go out there and be effective in collecting these fines, but I think that's where it's important to have an effective and an efficient government, so that way, all of the residents throughout the city know that this is happening and know there are consequences for these prohibitions.
Okay. Mr. Blomquist.
Railroads were a big problem and a focal point in my administration, obviously, and a result of working with the railroads on that, again, is able to secure monies to go ahead and get the underpass done on Columbia. That was important for public safety. We have eighty-four trains today on the north tracks at the time, and about eighty on the south tracks, the CSX lines. They have two different operators, each operating about eight trains every twenty-four-hour period. What that causes is it takes about five minutes for a moving train to pass, you know what I mean? You're blocked in your seven-city streets at the time, you know, we're blocked like, I think like seventeen to twenty hours a day. And that's with a moving train. What really exacerbates the problem is when they do stop or stall on the tracks, they are long enough to block multiple crossings. Again, we worked on that, and with, again, former Congressman Kucinich, we were able to get funding for an overpass, initially stated for, slated for Fitch Road. Again, the local jurisdiction, the township, wanted to move that to Sterns. We kept at it, we worked with people, and eventually, we got two out of there, and they were built in that subsequent fashion, pitch for a reliever on North two fifty-two, so that it didn't disrupt and eliminate our historic downtown. And again, those are where the max trains were, and that's where you had the relief. Now, when I was mayor, I had the police department not just find the train for blocking a crossing, but if that train blocked several crossings, again, it was a seven-thousand-dollar fine established by state law for each crossing blocked. So again, we try and get their attention, but they treat it as a cost to new business.
Okay. Did anyone want to take advantage of a sixty-second follow-up on trains? Well, since I've been covering Olmsted Falls, one of the big things that's been discussed is the Phase Five sewer project, which I guess, as I understand, that's the last section of Olmsted Falls where sewers need to go in. Apparently, there've been a lot of problems, it's been delayed. Where does that stand now, and can the city do anything to make this happen faster? I guess those areas are still on septic systems, right? So I'm sorry, are we up to Mrs. Garrett now?
I believe so.
I think that, and Mr. Lynn is chairman of utilities, so he might want to start addressing that.
All right.
Three hundred and twenty homes it affects right now. As the chairman of utilities, I jumped onto this immediately when I got onto council. I can tell you right now, the plan that our former engineer had designed was flawed, and we couldn't conceivably do that project. Mayor Blomquist, under his administration, rejected all bids at one of the final meetings of two thousand and thirteen. They rejected all the bids, they left this thing in our lap. We went out, we had to retrieve the engineering money that had already been spent, bring it back in. Chagrin Valley Engineering did a very fine job getting that money back for us. They re-engineered the project. The project was originally slated for about four and a half million, five million dollars. It ended up being nine million dollars. Right now, Chagrin Valley Engineering and Mr. Shihi are trying to secure more funds so that we can move forward with that project. We've got a seventy-five percent failure rate of septic systems in that neighborhood. The Cuyahoga County Department of Health has been very, very kind to us. They've allowed these people to ride with what they have right now, to make sure that they're not gonna go out and spend fifteen or twenty thousand dollars, which, by the way, comes out of their pocket right now, where the sewer will come out over a twenty-year period as an assessment. We've worked with the Board of Health, we've worked with the EPA. Right now, we've got everything on hold, we're trying to secure the money to go ahead with this project. We've got a good, healthy, engineered plan for it. Some of the homes may have to have a grinder pump in them, but that's not that unfortunate. We'll include that in the cost of the sewer installation. But it will move forward someday.
Okay. Mrs. Garrett.
I was just going to add, I believe it is fall of this year, two thousand and fifteen, that we're going to be meeting with Mr. Shihi from Chagrin Valley Engineering to determine whether we should move forward and reapply at that time.
Okay. Mr. Miller.
There's no one I trust more on these kind of issues than Jay Lynn here, so I definitely know that he has this under control. But this is something that should be a priority for council. I mean, this is one of the basic utilities throughout all levels of government that we need to be providing for our citizens.
Okay. And Mr. Blomquist.
The project that the city had been awarded two and a half million dollars for was essentially, give or take, a five-point-one, five-point-two million-dollar project. Again, the bids for construction came a little bit higher, but again, as I was mayor, the project took a lot of time to go ahead and look at each and every stakeholder and address the last bits of public apprehension about projects on some of the streets. That took time, and the costs went up. That's what we heard, and as the bids came in over, by law, we had to reject those bids. I can't comment too much on policy, but it's my rudimentary understanding that, again, this council, again, with the new engineer, they're looking at the same area, but getting far higher numbers, okay? Again, I thought they were told that a new engineer could come on in and raise some of the lines up and whatever, and not go so deep on some roads. I don't think they've netted those type of savings that they were initially promised when that engineer came to get the job. What they're doing now is trying to break that into small bits, 80, 90 segments of homes at a certain time. Mr. Lynn's well aware that probably at the end of the day, unless this city contributes a heck of a lot more money, the grant applications they're putting in at 40% or 50% or whatever participation, even by doing a smaller project, assessments of those residents are going up from when they were first established. What I would have had to do at the time would be kick more public money in and get the project done, rebid it.
And I guess, what about, there were some statements that the engineers' specifications, your engineer's specifications were flawed. Is there any truth to that, or...
Asking me?
No, no, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm a little prerogative here in asking this.
I'll comment on it when you're ready.
I'm unaware of any particular flaws in the design, that's the first I've heard of that was today. Again, the construction cost came a little bit higher, but all the elements of that project, even as they were reviewed, nothing significantly changed, is my understanding, as they're trying to go forth, other than they want to segment this in smaller groups. That's going to work to their detriment, because each individual component, if you take this Phase Five and divide into five ABC or whatever, each of those is going to cost more. And the net result for taxpayers is their assessments are going to be higher than they would have been otherwise. And again, those are the type of subjects that, again, it's not personal, but there is another view. And when you get into these details, those views need to be expressed, and the merits of everything raised, so that council can come to a consensus opinion of what's good for everyone.
And I gave you a little bit extra time, and I want to know if anybody else has a follow-up.
I know. The details are, and the flaws are. For instance, the Sunoco Station at the corner of Columbia is listed on the former engineer's drawings as having a basement. It's never had a basement, not in the 100 and some years it's been there. We actually have a section of town that's unswearable. We've deemed that River Road is unswearable because of the bedrock and the proximity and the lay of the land for this. It was the most expensive part of the searing of the community. And we have now looked at this, and we said, maybe it would be better to take River Road and let these people replace their septic systems, instead of having the rest of the community bear the cost of the most expensive part of the project. Then, we're going to move forward in phases, and I think you're all aware, that a lot of times sewer projects are done in phases. There's nothing taboo about that at all. It's the way things are done. Mr. Shihi did raise the level of the sewer some 18 to 20 feet in some areas, and had tremendous savings. It's just that the original design was just not feasible.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to add that we've been working very closely with the Public Health Department also, so they've been a good partner to us.
But let me ask each of the candidates then, and hopefully this won't require a follow-up. What do you think is the most important issue facing Olmsted Falls today? And I'm...
I believe right here.
Okay.
Economic development. Economic development is definitely the biggest issue facing Olmsted Falls right now. Too much of the tax burden has been placed on the residents. And with the reduction in local government funding, I think it's definitely inherent on the city to be able to provide some other sources of funding through taxes. In doing that, I think it takes a fresh perspective to be able to look at a blank canvas and really be able to start from ground zero, instead of having preconceived ideas and saying that we've already been down this road. We tried it 20 years ago, we tried it five years ago, and it didn't work. It's a new day and age within government, and sometimes there are other rocks to be able to be searched. Sometimes, there's some funding at the local level, the state level, and even at the federal level. I think there are many opportunities that haven't been fully realized in Olmsted Falls over the last few years.
Okay. Mr. Blomquist, most important issue facing the town?
Economic development in the city's finances. They go hand-in-hand. There's only two ways to sit there and grow, or maintain a balanced budget, and that's either you limit your expenses, or you increase your revenues, okay? You can increase your resident revenues by asking people to participate more and more and more, tax-wise, or the economic development component. You can grow your way out of this and look to the future. The templates there, the bases are there. What we need to leverage those things, we do need to pay attention more to our 21st century economy, you know, more of the home businesses and such like that, and make sure that those people are free to get in, develop, and participate that way and help with the city's tax base by doing things out of their homes. And again, it's the small engine of economic development, but it's a large component. You're right, even in the Joint Economic Development District, it's got a freeway access a half mile away at Sterns Road. That's the closest you're going to get. These two communities need to come to grips, okay, with the fact that they are in between freeways. A lot of that develops along those main thoroughfares and spurs off of that. And so, you're only going to attract, you know, secondary-type development. But that doesn't mean you don't pursue it, you pursue it aggressively as you can. As the city finances, you've got to rein those expenses in, because economic development takes time.
Mr. Lynn, most important issue facing Olmsted Falls?
I just can't emphasize enough that our investors in the downtown area and all over the community, we're going back and we're looking at things that have been ignored since 2010, under the Mayor Blomquist administration. We just had calls the other day from a business owner on Sprague Road that has got issues that were outstanding then, and they want to get them rectified, and they're willing to work with us. And we're still going back, and we're still fixing old things from the past. It's hard to move forward, and we've tried, we've done... I think we've made the greatest strides that have been made in years with economic development. At this particular time, we're reviewing our codified ordinances and our city charter, we're trying to make it more business-friendly. Our charter and Mayor Blomquist's administration was actually business, not business-friendly whatsoever. We had one business that was in town for over 20 years, 25 years, lucrative business, and what we were forced to put him through at Planning Commission was unconscionable. This guy's been a taxpayer for years and years and years. As the chairman of Planning Commission, I asked over and over and over for information to help this gentleman get a conditional use, and I ran into a brick wall through Mayor Blomquist, the Planning Department, the Building Department, the city engineer. It was like this, they didn't want this guy. I've seen it numerous times over the years. We had people that wanted to develop land, they were stymied to develop land, and, you know, unfortunate.
Mrs. Garrity?
I think, since everyone's already mentioned economic development, I'll mention shared services. And I think we did an excellent job with dispatch. We're now part of the Southwest City Center down on 82 in Strongsville. And there was a lot of work involved in getting that moved and getting that consolidation. And with that, we, you know, we saved a lot of money, and now we have, instead of one operator dispatcher answering the phone, they have backup dispatchers, and nobody's ever put on hold. We can now give out medical instructions, like instructions for CPR. They have cell phone tracking technology, just state-of-the-art disaster planning, things that we could never have accomplished by doing it on our own. And if anybody would like to see the center, it's on the corner of Pearl and 82. When Mayor Blomquist was in office, he wasn't even able to get the dispatch moved from the basement up to the vacant third floor, where we were able to move it all the way to Strongsville. And we're down there with partnerships, and everything has been working very smoothly, and everybody's had very positive comments. Thank you.
Anyone have a follow-up?
Yes, sir. The Joint Regional Dispatch Center in Strongsville is a product of work of my administration when I was mayor. If you remember, legislation and plans were coming up before council, and again, sometimes politics gets in the way. It's hard to get things done when you're in an election cycle. A lot of criticisms were there, but at the end of the day, the administration came in, and again, they looked for fresh ideas and new ways of doing things. And they looked to partner with the township to share services with the city of North Olmsted, the city of Brook Park, all around, and they came back to the original idea put forth with the agreement with Strongsville. A lot of times, there's too much pride in public officials. The resistance to the idea the city of Strongsville was essentially Strongsville was offering a contract. We will host you, we will maintain control of the center, you will participate, you will have a voice, but all made the decisions are Strongsville's. It's worked out very well for everyone, but that's what the resistance at the time, and that was the idea that they came back to.
Well, now is the point where candidates can ask each other questions, and I guess we go around from one to another. Do you want to ask any questions of any or all of your... The people running this year?
Just from the standpoint that, again, I know they sit there and say things are rosy, and they put glossy publications around town that kind of paper over the issue of what's really going on. These are copies of sheets that, their statement of catch positions that each and every council reads into their record monthly at their meetings. Again, if, I'll ask Ms. Garrity, okay, if you would take a look at this right here, that's December 14th, or December 31st, 2014. What's the opening balance, and what's the ending balance?
If I could, I'm not going to look at any sheets right now, but what I'm going, I'll respond.
If the beginning balance is $2,422,000, and the ending balance is $1,743,000, that's a net decrease of $300,000 in one year. And you can try to blame all that on a prior administration, but it doesn't hold water. When you get into this year, and your opening balance is $1,890,000, and you're down to $1,317,000...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. Can you read the ending balance from 2000, the year before that?
Yes. It's $1,743,000...
I'll read the starting balance in January.
You'll have to ask your finance director whether it changed. $1,890,937.
Do you think that final tax payments may have come in?
No, because December 31st is New Year's Eve.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Presley, I think he's very, very qualified. You've got a big discrepancy in your facts right there.
Yes, and we should have...
These are not mine, these are the city's...
Yeah, they are, but you went from 1.7 to 1.9.
Yes.
Right there.
I agree, Mr. Lynn, it makes my sense that...
And if you look at some of the capital improvements that were done during that year...
Are you going to be leaving copies of that with me? I mean, I can look at it, I have a thing, we're not going to be able to sort that out in the next few seconds here.
Sure.
So, Mr. Lynn, did you have any questions for the other candidates?
I have a couple of questions, I don't know if they're appropriate or not. I know that Mayor Blomquist historically has ignored some of the laws in the community. We had the law director that duped our own Architectural Board of Review by letting a critical, a critical timeframe lapse, and then sent a letter on a weekend to the Architectural Board of Review, who was unaware of this time period, and they allowed a historic home to be destroyed, to be destroyed, by using the codified ordinance and duping the Architectural Board of Review. The other thing I'd like to add, if Mayor Blomquist is so adept at these financials, I believe you were fined by the Board of Elections in excess of $150,000 for your own financial misgivings, when you ran for mayor and you didn't file your campaign finance reports. You know, and then I look at your petitions, and I wasn't aware that both of your children moved back home. Did they?
Yes.
Okay, great, God bless them, I'm glad they're back in the community. I just, you know, I see their signatures on the petitions, and I know what the election laws say, and I had understood that they both lived out of the community. I just, I had a question, and I wanted to ask you, I'm glad they moved back home, you know? But I think that the city right now has the best finance director it's had in the history of my workings with the city. I trust Mr. Presley, I trust Mr. Skulak, another colleague on council, he's our chairman of our finance committee. I haven't heard him throw up any red flags, have you, Linda? Okay, and the only reason I ask Linda, and I don't ask Kyle, by the way, I support Kyle 100%, I think he'll make a great addition to our council. He's got the background, he's got the accolades, he's just, I think he's going to be one of the best things since sliced bread. And Mr. Havlin, it's a shame he couldn't be here tonight, Mr. Havlin is a top-notch economic guy, too. He's been executive director of Midtown Cleveland for the last 12 or 13 years. He makes things happen, and he gets economic things done. I don't have a lot else to add, I just want to keep the city moving in the direction it's moving right now. I think that we're on the move, we're into the 21st century now. We have an administration that I think is doing a great job, we're saving tremendous amounts of money in the Building Department. We had 11 homes built in five or six years, and we were shelling out $250,000 a year, in excess of $250,000 a year for a building department that would do an inspection every two years.
Mrs. Garrity?
I just wanted to say that I'm a proud member of your Falls team, and some of the things that we had...
Maybe we should clarify what your Falls team means to people who don't know. You ran during the last election along with Mayor Donigan, correct?
During the last election, yes. And Mr. Lynn, yes.
It was you, Mr. Lynn, and was there a third?
Brandy Pico, and Mayor Donigan. And we ran as a slate of candidates. We are historically, and it should be noted, two of us are Democrats and two of us are Republicans. And we ran together because we had common interests, and the common interests were the betterment of the city of Olmsted Falls.
I didn't want to take away from that, I wanted to...
I'm sorry.
Thank you for that. So, I am a proud member of your Falls team, and as Mr. Lynn said, we've made a lot of progress. And I don't know why Mr. Blomquist would come with his financial record from his previous administration, and again, I'll outline, you know, at least $250,000 in uncollected trash fees, with no attempt whatsoever to go out and try to recapture any of that money, and that's a huge amount of money for Olmsted Falls. And by the way, I spearheaded the initiative, we paid $5,000 to a CPA auditor, who, two auditors, I should say, and we're waiting to get the results back to see at what point can we collect any of those missing funds. Again, I'll bring up half a million dollars for the railroad. And that would just be like my husband putting 500,000 in the bank and not telling me or my son about that money, and then my husband passes away, and my son and I struggle through life, not knowing that that money is sitting in that checking account. That's just unheard of. Why would anybody do that if they truly were interested in the city and not in personal gain? Thank you.
Mr. Miller, spoke a question for your opponents, if you have.
I don't think I have a question. Could I offer a final statement?
Your final statement, sure.
That would be great. Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to have this debate. I think it's been very helpful, and hopefully, anybody watching it finds that it's helpful, too. I think I have the education, I think I have the experience and leadership, and I think I have the vision and passion to be able to put a plan forward, to be able to make Olmsted Falls a more effective, a more efficient, and a more engaged government. I think that you'll see in going through my background that I have the common sense, I have the ability to ask the tough questions, to be able to really research, get through into the facts, make the tough decisions, and at the end of the day, fight for the community, because that's what government's supposed to be. Government positions are a service position to your friends, to your neighbors, and to the community that you serve. And I hope any of the voters that are watching this will consider me as their councilman.
Okay. I think we're pretty well done, unless anybody have one final statement? Okay.
I just wanted to say that as I was going door-to-door in different areas of the city while I was having my petition signed, I received so many positive statements from taxpayers, and everybody, you know, they're getting the news by way of the website, by way of, for example, our financial statement that was mailed, our new newsletters, Facebook, Twitter. So, we're out there trying to reach the people. And at our last master planning meeting, I think that was two weeks ago, it was shoulder to shoulder. So, it was well-attended, and people are still giving us suggestions on how we can reach out and bring more people in to get them involved, and we're going to follow up